Good evening and welcome to the July twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen Ashland Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by the good folks at W A C A T V. Is there anyone in the room that is recording this? If not, then we'll proceed. I would like to invite Patrolman Mike Snyder to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you Patrolman. Normally, we start with citizen participation. Is there anyone in the room this evening for participation? If not, if not, I will move right into our first agenda item, a scheduled appearance, and that's an introduction of new members of the Ashland Police and the Ashland Fire Department. So if the two chiefs can come up and start the proceedings.
All right, our newest members, November, we started two new firefighters. We have John Kren- Green, sorry, I always say that, John Green. He's a firefighter, paramedic.
Excuse me, have him come to the front.
Come right up so people can see you.
They better camera.
We want to nibble.
He transferred to Ashland from Northbridge Fire prior to here.
Nice, very good, welcome.
Welcome.
At the same time, we brought on John Stone, the son of Peter Stone, who's also a member of our department. Yep, he's also a firefighter, paramedic, transferred out of Charlton Fire.
Good, welcome, welcome.
And our last new hire was in April, that's a dispatcher, and that is Patricia Rhodes. She actually was a dispatcher in Hopkinen prior to coming to us.
Right.
Did we steal you, I mean, did we borrow you?
These are our three newest.
Well, welcome, welcome on board.
Congratulations and welcome to our fair town.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get some pictures too.
Good evening, I'm very pleased to introduce our new patrol officer, Mike Snyder. Mike has transferred to us from the Lee, Massachusetts Police Department. He lives in Ashland, so needless to say, he's very happy about his new commute now, not too far. He spent six years on the Lee Police Department, he has a great career there. He was on the Berkshire County Drug Task Force, so he has a lot of experience in those areas. And he started Monday, and he's very well accepted, solid background, and we're very, very pleased to have him on board to help us out.
Nice, very good, very good.
Field training, is he all done with his field training and stuff? Is he solo, writing solo now?
We have about a two-week program, so he'll be out in the boat, but he's already an experienced police officer, so we abbreviated the program for him.
Very good, well, again, welcome. Do you want to say a few words to the community?
Did the pledge of allegiance very well, so.
So we have another appointment this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to the town manager to make that appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Alfano, can you step up to the podium? So everyone, Chief Alfano started March twenty-third, remember that day. He started here as the interim chief. For those of you that remember when I made that appointment, introduced him as the retired chief from the Bolton Police Department. I thought it was four years, you said today it was three years. But in a few short months, I think we've seen Chief Alfano really kind of reinvigorate the department, I think. And he's also just really done a great job of getting out into the community and becoming a part of the community. I have never seen a chief tackle neighborhood issues the way the chief has. He likes the idea of community policing, just doesn't talk it, he actually practices it. And I think one of the things that really, really impressed me the most was, he didn't even need any encouragement to move his office over back into the main police station. He took the initiative to do that. It was, of course, something I was going to suggest, but he saw the need for that right away. So for that and other reasons, a myriad of reasons, mainly his leadership within the community and the department, I have asked Chief Alfano to come out of retirement and serve as our police chief for at least the next couple of years. He still has a few years before mandatory retirement. And I'm pleased to say that Chief Alfano has accepted that. So I'm here tonight to announce the appointment of Chief Alfano as our permanent chief of police.
Outstanding. So I know, I know you're a man of few words.
You fit right in.
I just want to let you know, we do have a scheduled hearing at seven-thirty. So I just want to clarify that. But I do want to acknowledge, your wife is in the audience, Christine, so if you want to acknowledge Christine, that'd be great. And the microphone is yours, at least for the next couple of minutes.
Okay, now, I'll get very used to being up at this podium, believe me. The first thing I want to do is thank all of you, and in particular, our town manager, Mike Herbert. When I accepted this position as the interim chief, I, you know, I'd heard a lot of wonderful things about Ashland. I grew up in Framingham, so I had very close interaction with the community. The Ashland that I grew up with has changed considerably, and every day, I'm more amazed when I see the progress that this town has made going forward. But one thing that I constantly see every day is, though this town moves forward, it still feels like a nice, small, family-oriented community. And I'll use that word, "community." And I am amazed the way the community has embraced me, my family, in the short time that I've been here. And that meant a lot to me. So when Mike talked to me about staying, it was not a difficult decision. Between the relationships that I've formed and made with the police department, and there's many, many officers out here right now, they're heroes, the police officers and the firefighters. My job is to support them and give them the tools that they need and make sure that they're steered in the right direction. But they do the work. And the reason I'm standing up here is, it's not so much me, it's all of them. They do it, they're the reason why the residents of Ashland and everybody that comes through this town has such an amazing experience with their police and public safety personnel. And I include the fire department in that, because we work so closely together, and I've made a lot of friends in the fire department with our relationships. So as a third party coming in here, I can tell you, as the board of selectmen and the town manager, you are very well protected in this town. The men and women of your public safety services are nothing short of amazing. And I noticed that right off the bat when I first started. So I want to thank all of you for your support, and again, in particular, Mike. And I know, Mr. Maniani, you, right from the start, have been very, very supportive too. So we had some experiences together way back many years ago on the police force. So thank you for the faith and trust that you've placed in me. You have a wonderful group of employees, especially in the police department where I'm entrusted to leadership there. And I guarantee you, you will see amazing things happen, even more amazing than going forward. And I think I used the term this morning with Mike, it's an adventure. It's an adventure for all of us. And we're going to go to a wonderful place, and we're going to get there and keep everybody safe. And we're going to have fun doing it, and you'll be very, very proud of your public safety services in this town. So thank you for the faith and the trust you placed in me.
Thank you, don't go away yet. So I just want to acknowledge all our first responders, our public safety in the audience. I think it's a great representation, really appreciate it, and so thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to take, you know, a couple of pictures, so if there's somebody out there with a cellphone. But I'd like to acknowledge a couple of guests in the audience tonight. Senate President Karen Spilka is in the audience, and Representative Jack Lewis. So maybe they can join us and we can take a picture altogether with the chief.
Just also, Christine up as well? Sure, I just want to acknowledge my wife Christine in the back, because we were retired and we were teaching, and now she's handling all the chores on the homestead. I haven't mowed the lawn since I started at this job, she's been doing that.
She driving the tractor?
Yeah, she's driving the tractor, very supportive.
Susan, you going to take some? No, Jen, you got to be in here, come on. Susan should be in as well. So thanks again to our public safety personnel for being here tonight and supporting the new employees, the new staff, and of course, the chief's appointment as well, so thank you very much. Our next agenda item is actually scheduled for seven-twenty. I don't know if we're ready to do that yet. Yeah, why don't, if you don't mind, that way we can, we can move on with that.
We can do the consent agenda.
Consent agenda real quick.
Yeah, okay, so we do have consent agendas up on the board, and...
Fifty-three seconds before it blows up, Susan. Oh, it does.
Okay, good, so the consent agenda, is there any, anyone interested in pulling anything out of the consent agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, and all those in favor of moving the consent agenda forward, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And that is three, zero, one, or did you vote?
I did not get to vote. I wasn't sure what we were voting on, so I didn't want to say yes, oh, okay.
Five-year extension for the town manager.
I do want to just...
Beth was not at her office, so I don't know where they went.
Then we're going to move forward with, I just want to acknowledge, before we move on from the consent agenda, just a couple of individuals that we did accept resignations from, and that's Craig Mathias from the Cable Advisory Committee, and I know Craig's been very active in town for quite a few numbers of years, served on this, on the Select Board when it was called the Board of Selectmen. And then also Jeff Lingam from the Conservation Commission, as well as the Nines Advisory Committee, as well. And, you know, Jeff's been involved for a number of years, and really, a great, both Craig and Jeff have been a great asset to the community.
If it's okay, I wanted to just add, I was, had the opportunity to talk to Craig, and he wanted to extend his thanks to the Select Board for having appointed him and for having worked with many of us over the years. And he is going to miss Ashland, because he actually is moving, but he has enjoyed his time here.
That's great, well, best wishes to Craig and his family, and also to Jeff and his family. And then we wanted to acknowledge a couple of new appointments. Nathan Band to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and he got a pretty good recommendation from the zoning board. So look forward to Nathan serving on the Z B A. And then Deb Griffin to the Ashland Affordable Housing Trust. And Joe, you can speak to that, I know you were involved in that.
Deb is a very strong asset to our committee, and she has some background in this field. She just jumped right in, started working right away, listening, and came up with some great ideas and suggestions. And she'd be a great fit and great blend, working with Steve, myself, and Dan. And I believe we still have one more position that's vacant, anybody that's interested. We've had several people that have come to the meetings, but when they realized the extent of the amount of work that goes into it, some of them said that they would rather just stay on the outside and help as much as they can, because they couldn't commit to the time aspect of it. But if anybody's interested, we still have one vacancy available on the Affordable Housing Trust.
That's great, well, thank you to both Nathan and to Deb for stepping forward and participating in our local government. Speaking of appointments, this is our, we're getting to our annual reappointment time in August. And so those, I know Susan Robey has put out the message to those that are serving, and if they want to be reappointed, please let us know that that's what they would like, and so that our next meeting on the seventh is when we would be doing our reappointments. So that, moving on, it's, our next agenda item is a request for one-day liquor licenses for the corner spot. So I see Beth Reynolds in the audience, if you would come to the podium, please? And please describe your request.
I'm bringing the applicants as well. Joe.
I'll start with the head.
Thank you for having us here tonight. So I'd like to introduce you to Melinda and J P, they're from Lost Shoe Brewing and Roasting. They are a business that is located in Marlboro, and they are looking to pop up at the corner spot for a three-day beer garden, and they have done all of their necessary paperwork through Susan. But we're bringing them here to you today so that you can meet them, ask them any questions that you have about their business, or maybe they can just tell you about their business, and then you can ask questions after, so give the floor to them.
Yeah, absolutely, that's great, thank you. Please come to the mic.
Hi, am I close enough? I'm Melinda, so my husband J P, we own Lost Shoe Brewing and Roasting Company, right in downtown Marlboro. We opened only two and a half months ago, so we're very new still. We roast coffee on site, we brew beer on site, we have a taproom, very involved in our community. We do a Monday Night Run Club, Tuesdays we have trivia, so we like to bring our community together.
Very good, good, so questions from the board for the applicant?
What makes you want to come to Ashland for your pop-up?
So because we're so new, we are really starting to try to get our name out there a little bit more. Ashland is only fifteen minutes away from us, so I think it's a really great community to kind of spread our name out a little bit.
And then Lost Shoe, how did you get to be Lost Shoe Brewing?
Marlboro's history as a shoe manufacturing city, yeah.
So it looks like from what was included in the packet, you guys are going to be doing coffee as well as beer?
Yeah.
So it looks like you're going to be open on the weekends from like noon to nine or ten P M.
Yep.
So is part of that coffee, like, all day, or is it like, okay?
Yep, so we'd have a cold brew on at all times. So our plan, we have a jockey box, we can serve up to four beers at a time, so three of those will be dedicated to beers, and then the fourth will be a cold brew coffee.
And I know the corner spot generally will have food and entertainment and other things that happens during the time where we have a brewery.
Yes, good question. So I'm working right now, I have two food trucks for three of the days already, so I won't have a problem filling the other day as well. And then we will follow all procedures like we have in the past, cordon off the area, just to let people, just to remind them that nothing leaves the site as well, so we'll follow all protocol that we have in the past.
I noticed that the cordon off area is a little bit away from where they'll be selling the, selling their beer. Could they make it a little bit closer so they don't have to walk beyond the area that they have to get to to consume?
Yeah, typically, we, I think there's a diagram, there should be a diagram in your packet, but, yeah, and it, oh, except it's not in color.
It is different, no, that's why.
Typically, it's this whole area around the shed, so this is just the senior.
Yeah, but usually, it includes the seating area, and then it goes to the path down the middle, just to give people room, really, to move. And they just play games, they play cornhole in that area, we set up the cornhole games. So that's really what they do in that space, so.
I just didn't want, because all it takes is one, and then it just gets...
We keep the kids' area separate.
Okay, that's cool.
So do you serve food in your location in Marlboro?
We do, soft pretzels and Belgian waffles, but everything else is kind of bring your own food.
You bring your own, okay.
Yeah.
And clarify what a taproom is as opposed to a brew pub or...
So it's really just a big, open space for lots of different seating, at least this is how ours is set up. Brew pubs, you typically have a restaurant and the beer that's brewed on premise as well. With our farmer brewers license, it allows us to produce beer on site, sell pints of beer as opposed to just samples, or giveaway samples, and then we can also self-distribute as well.
So you can, do you sell growlers, as an example, is that something that you're able to do?
Yeah, we have cans, yeah.
Yeah, that's the trend.
Yeah.
Very good, any other questions from the board? Okay, any discussion about this, the application, the request?
No, I think it's a great idea, I love the name of your company. My family comes from a certain sector, my family comes from the Marlboro area.
Oh, awesome.
My uncle was the shoe repairman down there for many, many, many years.
Oh, very cool.
Rensie Shoe Repair.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was my uncle.
We have some shoes donated, yeah, some, yeah.
Well, we've done quite a few of these, I think, over the last couple of years, and so I think they've been pretty successful as a, and well-received stuff. So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, I move that we approve the request for three one-day liquor licenses for Lost Shoe Brewing and Roasting Company for Friday, August sixteenth, from three P M. to ten P M., Saturday, August seventeenth, from noon to ten P M., and Sunday, August eighteenth, from noon to nine P M.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second, of all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and all those opposed, and that is four, zero, one. And I forgot to mention, our fifth member, Mr. Shear, is unfortunately, he's enjoying himself elsewhere, but not here. So that's four, zero, so welcome to Ashland, and look forward, so what will you be serving when you come to Ashland in terms of beer?
So we'll probably have a couple light beers, so we'll probably have a Creme l'air. We'll probably have a Belgian style, and then a German style.
Very nice, okay.
Couple of nice summer beers.
Like, easy to drink.
Yeah.
So what style of Belgian waffles do you guys serve?
The traditional...
Well, there's two kinds, right, there's the ones with the sugar and the one without.
It's with the sugar, yeah.
Yeah, Alanda's from Belgium. Those are waffles.
They're delicious.
They're really good, yeah.
Very good, well...
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Looking forward to it, thanks, thank you Beth.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
So we have just a couple of minutes, we have a scheduled hearing at seven-thirty. I want to jump to the Eversource, and get that under Old New Business. And the board, the Select Board held the retreat a couple of weeks ago, and one of the items that we did discuss at that retreat was a seeking of declaratory judgment on the Eversource easement, and we voted to support that and move forward with it. So Michael, do you want to give a little update on that?
I just, I checked in with Attorney Winter earlier today. He is still in the process of filing that, he's just working on some title, some title work related to the easements, and basically attaching that to the different pieces of land and parcels of land where the easement is recorded.
Okay, so that's still in process, I know there's some interested folks here regarding Eversource, so that's in process. Any updates? I know the docket at the Siting Board has got some new additions, including a communication from Senator Spilka and Representative Lewis that's on there. I think there's a couple of new additions to, besides that. Anything else to report on Eversource?
I believe there is supposed to be a scenic road hearing tomorrow with Eversource.
Planning board, yeah.
I'm not necessarily sure what action they're going to take, or what Peter is going to recommend. I think with the easement issue still outstanding, and the E F S B not approving or permitting a route yet, it might be a little premature to have a Planning Board hearing. And then Conservation, I believe there's continued until the twelfth, it could be, of August.
Of August, yeah, okay, very good. One item we can knock off real quick is, under Old New Business, is E, Mission Vision Statement Revision. We talked about that at our retreat. There's really nothing to discuss, other than encourage everybody to send in their review and suggestions for when we meet in retreat again and revise it. So all I'm doing is collecting them, so that when we get to our retreat, we can, we're not starting from scratch. We've got something to work with, so. So that is the Mission Vision Revision. So I think we are actually close enough at this point. I believe all the parties are here for the alcohol transfer. So at this point, I'm going to read the legal notice. Notice is here by... Notice is here by given that the select board will conduct a hearing regarding an application to transfer a wine and malt license from Caris Inc. to Eon Inc. DBA Pizza Palace. Is it Eon or?
Yvonne.
Yvonne, okay, all right, so Yvonne Inc. DBA Pizza Palace, 74 Union Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721. A public hearing will be held on the matter at the Ashland Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. on Wednesday, July 24th, 2019 at 7:30 P.M. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. Interested parties who are unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments to the select board's office, Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721, or by emailing susanroby@sroby@ashlandmass.com. Signed, Steve Mitchell, Chair, Ashland Select Board. So at this point, the attorney and the applicant is here, so if you wish to present your application.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. My name is Tom Truax, I'm attorney up in Salem, Massachusetts. With me is Mr. John Gergis, he's the president, he's the director, he's the secretary, he's also a 50% shareholder in the corporation. He's also the proposed licensed manager for this transaction. The underlying transaction is pretty much set forth in the purchase and sale agreement. $450,000 purchase price, of which 350,000 is being seller financed. There is a request for a pledge of license by the seller for collateral, for security for that financing. Mr. Gergis comes before you with over 20 years of experience in the pizza business. The last eight years, he has been a part owner of a restaurant up in Billrica, which had a full liquor license, so he comes with experience dealing with alcohol. This is only a beer and wine license, but he comes with the experience for all alcohol. He knows the rules, as he told me, if he looks under, if, no matter what he looks like, you card him. So that's, that was the first thing out of his lips when I asked him about the carding requirements. In terms of experience, as I said, he's had that eight years of past experience up in Billrica. He was served safe certified with that restaurant, I believe it's recently expired, so he will have to re, do a new application to get the served safe brought up to date for a new application. His partner, well, I shouldn't say his partner, yes, he is his partner, Mr. Fekery, he is also here, he has been an employee at that restaurant for over five years. So he's very familiar with the process there, with the serving of the beer and wine, so he comes with that experience as well. So I think between the two of them, they'll run a pretty tight ship.
Very good. You're aware that our certification, we require, we don't allow by our bylaws, our policy, a, an online, you have to do a?
Go in person, yes.
In person or go to a?
Yes, a class.
So that's, so I just want to check, Susan, are we in receipt of all the required documentation at this point? We are, so we're in good shape there. So questions from board members?
I just have one question, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Will there be at least one person that's going to be safe certified?
They both are going to, more than, yeah, me and. At least two people.
Okay, well, I know at least two, but sometimes things happen where a person may have other things that they have to do.
On the premises, there will be at least one person.
We can include more like from the staff that will be certified.
Okay, I just, that just makes me feel a little bit more comfortable, thank you.
Good.
Anyone else with?
No.
No?
Looking forward to pizza.
So, so just so, so the folks know, this is the shop that's over by Cherry Blossom and that strip mall, in that section there. So just one, one quick question, on your application, you talk about the hours that you'd be working, it says 40 plus.
Yes.
Now, I think you're open more than 40 plus hours during the week?
Yes, yes.
So you're the, you'll be the manager on record, but you'll have other folks that will be there, you're not going to be there 100% of the time, obviously.
Yeah, but over 40, like around 45 hours, I'll be around there.
Yeah, and then so consequently, who takes over when you're not there?
Munir, and actually, his kids to work with us.
Okay, and so.
Which is, we're going to include them at the test.
In the tips, yeah, okay, all right, very good. So I have no other questions, anyone else? I will open it up to any opponents or members of the public that would wish to comment on this. And seeing none, then I would, at this point, take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
So the hearing is closed, and again, any additional questions before we entertain a motion?
No.
So let's.
I move that we approve the request for a transfer of liquor license for Pizza Palace.
Second.
Awesome.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that is four zero one, congratulations, welcome to Ashland.
Good luck.
Yes, welcome to Ashland.
Chair, we'd also like to have a vote on the pledge as well.
Excuse me?
On the pledge of license, a vote on the pledge.
Okay, so. Not quite sure if we've ever done.
I don't think we have, that's.
A motion.
What, and what is the pledge? I mean, I can create a motion, but.
He's basically putting it up as collateral.
Yeah, it's security.
Oh, okay, I move that we approve the pledge of the business as collateral, as presented. Is that?
Liquor license.
Liquor license, I'm sorry, the pledge of the liquor license as collateral.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Can I just have a, I have a quick question?
We have a second, we have a motion and a second, and so questions?
Is that a common practice, that's them?
Yes.
Because I don't, this is the first, we've never, we've never seen it here, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. That's why we're baffled.
It has been on liquor licenses before, but we've never taken a formal vote for it.
Okay.
But it has been in paperwork.
Okay, all right, so thank you. Great, all right, so you have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and all those opposed, so that is four zero one. Again, congratulations, welcome to Ashland.
Good luck. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's get rid of this paperwork here.
Isn't coming back, any action is undertaken on the license, it always comes back to you guys before anything else can happen.
Right, yeah, okay.
So, so.
Can you ask that question?
Let's, let's talk about that later.
Okay.
We're going to move on.
All right.
All right, so our next agenda item is our select board slash town manager priority project update. So letter A, rail transit district, so we can start with that.
Okay, so as you had mentioned before, Mr. Chair, the board had met and had a retreat, and one of the things that we discussed was the rail transit district and the, mainly the proposed 62-plus senior affordable housing development up on Lot 2 of the RTD. There were a couple of different things out there that were, that were, I guess you could say straggling in terms of what this development would look like and what you could do to help shape it. One of the things that you wanted to do was to come to some consensus as to what you would like to present to the developer as the board's position. And you were able to do that, I think, if I recall correctly, you were looking at something more in the line of 150 units, plus minus. A little bit smaller of a development area, the age would be restricted to 62-plus, and we were going to look at some of the affordable units at around the 30 to 50% income level as opposed to the standard 80%. So once you decided on that, I met with the developer and his team last week and presented that information to them. They took that information back with them and are looking it over and seeing what's feasible and what's not feasible, so. Have not, haven't heard back from the president of the company yet, so we have talked about an intermediary, or Mr. Powers.
Yes. Okay, good, any comments from the board?
Questions? So at this point, we're not planning on, or until we hear back from them in regards to a zoning change, because that was discussed for the special town meeting.
Yes, actually, one of the things that they brought up was the possibility of not doing a zoning change, but going through the 40B process. And so if they do decide to go through that process, obviously, the urgency, you know, changes in regards to whether or not they go forward with the special town meeting, the zoning change.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, so the, you know, what you went back to Tom Powers with, with what we had talked about at our retreat, especially, you know, things like the size and the age and things like that. If they would go through the 40B process, are those things still on the table? Will that, is that something that they would work? I'm not, so I'm not as familiar with.
Yeah, I mean, they seemed, they seemed, at the time that we met, they seemed a little bit more inclined to move forward through a 40B process with their original configuration that they had talked about. We did advise them, attorney Mead was there as well, of the, for lack of a better term, pitfalls of that approach. There's a number of things that are still outstanding, mainly the fact that the land that is part of that deed restriction has not been identified and agreed to by the board. So before anything can move forward, whether a 40B application or a zoning change and moving forward through a regular site plan process, they would still need to go through the A and R process and submit an A and R application to carve off that land that they were going to develop and the land that was going to be, you know, given back to the town, so.
And that would come before us to review?
Before the planning board.
Okay.
But obviously, let me take that back, no, you would need to review it because it needs to be acceptable to.
Right.
We have the land that would be given.
One of the things that we saw during the retreat was that the land was split up a little bit.
Right.
And that wasn't something that we were happy with. So hopefully, that land comes back and it's one unit possible instead of pieces here, there and everywhere.
Yeah, all right, so to, obviously, to be continued.
To be continued.
Good.
Okay, very good. Next is a report on the progress with our public safety building project. There's several updates, including the status of the building site, the costs and the, and the funding. So first, before I turn it over to the town manager, I'd like to acknowledge members of the public safety building committee in the room. Brett Walker, I think, is somewhere in the back. And Peter Chisholm.
Yep.
And also the two chiefs, Chief Roby and Chief Alfonso. So thank you for, for your attendance and your support in this, in this process. I, I would like to actually invite the chiefs to come up, if you don't mind, you can just grab a seat. And Peter and, Peter and Brett, you're welcome to come as well, but at this point, I would turn it over to the town manager for an update.
Sure, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the chiefs are here, is Brett, is Brett in the?
I believe.
Okay.
Okay, so Brett was here, so just wanted to acknowledge Brett.
Peter, you can use that chair, you don't have to bring a pencil.
So there are a couple of things that I want to update the board on and actually the community on with regards to the public safety building. As you said, Mr. Chair, you know, we're going to talk about the land, we're going to talk about the building costs, and then we're also going to talk about the proposed funding of the building in the future. So I'll start off with the costs. If you remember correctly, it's about, the estimated cost for a 44,000 square foot building back in the fall of 2018 was going to be around $25 million. Now, that included some of the soft costs, not the design and engineering, but things like contingencies, et cetera. We have since that time revised those cost estimates after we hired our owner's project manager and architect. And unfortunately, the news is not good. If we continue to look at a targeted July 2020 construction date, a public safety building at 44,000 square feet is, and its related soft costs, is now anticipated to cost more around $29 million as opposed to 25, so a $4 million increase.
And what's, what's driving that, Michael?
The major drivers are policy decisions, I think, at the federal level, really tariffs, steel tariffs. I don't know if anybody's had experience with, you know, with construction, but, you know, material costs are, can be a pretty significant item within the budget. And when you have tariffs like what's on steel right now, unfortunately, inflates the cost quite a bit. The other thing is supply and demand in the construction sector. Quite frankly, contractors have all the work that they can handle, and as such, they assign a premium to some of these projects as well, so. And I think after further conversation with the estimators, it's, it's not going to get any better. So we've been looking at a 3% per year cost escalation, they've revised that to be more around the lines of 7.5%. So it's unfortunate. Any questions related to that?
No, actually, just a comment, I think Jen put together a pretty good spreadsheet of the impacts over, you know, the next, if we, if we delay over a period of time and, and how it escalates. Even if it doesn't stay at seven and a half percent, and it's a normal, a more normal escalator, it's still, every year, it's, becomes more and more expensive, so.
So I'll move on to the funding, which is actually a little bit more, I think, certainly larger in magnitude. So in June, the governor released his capital budget, and unfortunately, I have to say, our new public safety building was not included in that capital plan for the FY 2024 budget period. No municipal safe, public safety projects were included in that, quite frankly. And I just want to reiterate, this is something that we knew was going to happen, this is something that was expected. Especially in this situation, until we had design and engineering for the building completed, we would not be in a place where we could request, seriously request that funding, so that was not a surprise. I think, you know, what I do want to talk about is the fact that, I think in more recent conversations, we've realized that the, the timing of the release of fundings, of funding, and the amount of the funding is really unclear. And ultimately, you know, the governor, it's up, a lot of these things are out of our control. The governor, you know, must include it in the appropriate capital plan after it's been included in a bond authorization. And so again, a lot of that's, that's out of control. I think, you know, last year, we felt really confident that our combined state and local efforts would be able to get this money out in a more, I guess you could say predictable and timely fashion. And I think, you know, in hindsight, I'll say that, you know, the confidence and message was premature on my part. But that is the situation that we're faced with in terms of the bond bill funding and state funding. So I want to quickly pivot to what does that mean for us, right? So I think we've talked about the fact that with these cost escalators, the building's just going to get more and more expensive. So I think the public safety building committee, and I know we talked about it at the select board meeting, we're committed to getting a building built starting in July 2020. And so what that means is that we're going to need to look at a debt exclusion vote for some, if not all, of the 29 million that's going to be necessary to build this project. It just makes no sense from an operational standpoint, it makes no sense from a cost efficiency standpoint to wait any longer, everybody knows the condition of the buildings. So what we're committed to doing is trying to find a way to reduce the impact on the Ashland taxpayers as much as possible. We talk about a $29 million building, I'm not expecting to go and ask the taxpayers for 29 million, I'm actually looking for significantly less. And that's going to be incumbent upon our team here to figure out how we're going to do that. We're going to use that through a mixture of additional revenues, cuts in some places, and maybe a diversion of our capital funds in other places. I also want to continue to hold the door open for state funding either through the bond bill or other, other methods. I know the Senate President and I know Representative Lewis are going to continue to strongly advocate for this building and Ashland in general. I've got no doubt that that's going to happen. But again, I just want to reiterate, because we talked about this a little bit with the public safety departments this morning, I think their major concern was, are we going to push this building off again? And that is not the case.
The other, before I open it up for, for comments from the board, the other concern that they had was, was the size of the building, because we did discuss at public safety buildings, should we downsize the footprint? And I think we all collectively agree that that's not desirable, because we really want to build a building that is good for the next 25 years, Peter, is that? Yes, so I think.
We're going to go with 40, right?
So that's really, so that, that's the consensus, and so we're not going to deviate from that, but any other comments on, on your part?
Well, I just, I'm going to end it on some good news. Well, I just, I'm gonna end it on some good news, um, with regards to the land. So you, if you remember, the original acreage that was donated by Fafford Real Estate was four acres, approximately. Approximately four acres, it was actually the prime piece of land on that whole twelve acre parcel in terms of buildable property. But, um, we still felt a little bit constrained, or we felt that the footprint would be a little bit constrained, so. Mr. Mignani, um, decided to pursue getting a further donation of land from, uh, from Fafford and, uh, has had conversations with Mrs. Fafford and Mr. Fafford and has succeeded in securing an additional five acres.
Right, we have a gentleman's agreement, um, Mr. Fafford and I shook hands after a discussion, uh, to, he was gonna offer additional, the five, five point five acres, which is to the backside of the building and heading up towards the high school, which leaves roughly about two, just shy of two acres. Uh, so if you're looking at the, the pro- the, the lot from one thirty-five, it'll be to the right side of the building closer to the cemetery which, where those two acres are, are available. I left the door open and suggested to both Mr. and Mrs. Fafford that, um, they may want to entertain buying, uh, selling the property to us instead of going through planning stages, paying the taxes, uh, utilizing, uh, their efforts in another location. We have some monies that were available leftover from, from another, uh, source that's associated with, with this project that we could, we didn't have to go in front of the taxpayers and ask for the money. We had the money already set aside to utilize that to, uh, to give them, uh, an offer. I didn't give a, a dollar value amount, I didn't want them to think about it, um, they haven't gotten back to, they haven't got back to me. I did, uh, text her the, uh, later this afternoon, uh, with respect to that, and I haven't heard back from her. But, uh, I know that Jen is gonna be in contact, I was trying to, they're playing telephone tag with one of the engineers, uh, from the Fafford company to go over the, uh, the site design, uh, of where the boundaries will be, the new boundaries will be. Uh, so, um, and, I mean, that's a good thing, so that gives us some, uh, some flex in, in the building location on that property, which is, which would be great. And if we are lucky enough or fortunate enough to purchase the other two acres that are directly to that side, then, then it's all systems gold with respect to where that building needs to go and what we can put on there. Now that other property can be utilized for other town functions as well, uh, whether it may be a skate park or a, you know, a dock park, whatever. I mean, those, that, that land will be available for. Right, or extension to the cemetery, that too, or the upper Charles Trail. Don't forget, the upper Charles Trails.
Or a combination of those things.
Of those things, right.
Well, well done, Joe.
So, we're working on it, thank you.
Good, good job.
Still working on it.
Yeah.
No, I just, in, in closing, I think we know what we need to do here. And, um, I think the community knows what we need to do, we need to get this building built, we need to get it built now. Um, we've got a cup, we've got another building project coming online too, which is gonna be the new school, and I'm gonna have an update on that later. Ashland is a community that has done this before.
Both, both pro- projects, yes.
Lots of stuff together and then nothing for a while.
You know, um, we did, I think in the span of four years, a new high school, a new community center, renovated the library and renovated the town hall. So we're no stranger to that.
And some of those projects are coming off.
Some of those are coming off, so, so.
Alright, well, thank you, before I open it up for comments, uh, I just wanted to, we still have a couple of public safety, uh, staff here in the room. Uh, I just wanna restate the need for this building has not changed at all. And, uh, the select board, the public safety building committee are committed to securing the funding, uh, that we need to move forward and, uh, you know, we anticipate the community's gonna support us, um, and, uh, you know, we need to provide a facility that our first responders and deserve and that the town deserves as well, so, uh, I just wanna restate that. Um, I'll open it up for comments from the board, I'll also, uh, open it up to, uh, the chiefs and, uh, I will open it up, of course, to Senator Spilka and Representative Lewis if they choose to make comments, so. My colleagues on the board?
I just have one comment, and I wanna make, I was glad to hear you say that you're not looking to make the building smaller. Um, that you're really looking at our needs and not the needs for the next five or ten years, but further out.
Right.
I think we all know what happened in our schools when our first project didn't pass and we came back with a revised project, and as a community, we are dealing with some of those space issues that could have been resolved had we passed that building on the first pass in regards to the preschool and the fields and things like that. So to make sure that we put a building in place that is going to meet our needs, not only short term but long term, I think is very critical. And I just look forward to finding, you know, and seeing how we can do this that will be the least impact on the citizens, but still give them the building for them and for our first responders, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Brandy?
Um, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm glad we are moving forward with this project, I think this is something our town really needs. I think we were all at town meeting where it was pretty much a unanimous support of the project. So I think that moving forward, even given the, the escalating costs and, you know, I mean, we do have the land secured, so things are, things are, um, we need, we definitely need to move forward with this project. And, um, you know, I have, I have a ton of questions that are more, that I don't know if we have the answers to at this point, which is, you know, i- if we're looking to break ground a year from now, when does the funding have to be secured by? Like, do we have to have all twenty-nine million basically before we break ground? Is that something that we can do over a couple of budget cycles, you know, that type of thing? So that's more technical in nature, but I'm, I'm curious.
Yeah, well, I think the funding mechanism is, is in process at this point, so. I think a lot of those questions will, will get answered as we develop that.
Yeah, we've been pretty creative, so.
Mr. Joe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, being the, uh, the chair of the, uh, public safety, uh, building committee, um, we've had this discussion and, uh, we're all in agreement that this definitely needs to, to continue to go forward, uh, without putting anything aside. Uh, we've done that in the past and it's, you know, thirty years ago, and here we are today, we're still, we're still waiting on it. Um, so, I'm, I myself, along with some of the other members of the committee, were very happy that we didn't decide it not to reduce the size of the building. Um, and we use other, other towns, neighboring towns that have had similar issues and they low, or they decreased their, their building size, and they didn't gain anything other than getting a new bill and a new building, but it's the same size with no new growth to, for, for, for added growth. So if we, if we can learn from their mistakes, uh, one of the things that I would like to see is make sure that we, we, uh, we build for the future. And, uh, it's, it's not anything, it's not a Taj Mahal, I mean, it's the, it's the, the seven point five percent increase in inflation cost that we're trying to beat here, more than anything else. And, um, I think we're doing it the right way, um, we're doing diligently, we're doing our due diligence to get things done. I know Mike and Jen, uh, have been pulling their, you know, their collective thoughts together and trying to come up with a creative way for, for financing this, and I'm sure they'll come up with it, um, that's why we pay them the big money to do that. And hopefully, you're welcome, and, uh, don't worry, you'll get a decrease. And, uh, and, and I, and I'm sure.
That's gonna pay for it.
That's it, and I'm sure that, like Michael said earlier, that we'll keep the doors open with our legislative, our representatives and, and, and senate president to help us, uh, in the future, hopefully, uh, obtain some, some funding in, in the future. And if we are lucky enough or fortunate enough to get that happen, I mean, that, that helps detract some of the, the, the funding woes of, of the taxpayers. So we'll, we'll keep that open, and that's, we have to, we have to move forward. Uh, what's happened, has happened, and we, you know, I don't look back, looking back, it doesn't solve anything, moving forward does, so that's how I look at it.
Thank you, Joe. Um, so the next public safety buildings, uh, committee meeting, meeting of that is the thirty-first, uh, at six o'clock, so. So I just want to point out that Chief Alfano was, uh, part of a, of a safety, uh, building, a safety, uh, building committee, um, in Bolton. Yep, so I think your timing is, is impeccable again for, uh, for joining us full-time and, uh, being able to participate in that, so. Any, any comments from, from either of the chiefs?
I mean, overall, the guys were excited when the project started moving forward, something we've been trying to get for years. Uh, today's news was a little disappointing to them, but I think overall, the department's optimistic that we can work together and move forward with the projects.
Well, I hope, you know, Joe and I, uh, along with Michael, attended, uh, roll call at both departments this morning, and, uh, I think it was time well spent. And, uh, I hope that we communicated that, uh, you know, that we're, we're moving forward, the need hasn't changed, the building size hasn't changed, and, uh, um, you know, at some point in the very near future, we're gonna have a home that, that you're all deserving of, so.
Chiefs, just like, you know, some of the responses that I received, um, through some text messages that I got earlier this morning after our meeting, um, they're very positive and up, and, and upbeat with respect to the fact that they were thankful that, uh, we came out and told them what was happening. Um, they support what we were going to do, and it was, uh, it was all positive, there was no negative responses at all. So that was, that was a good thing, good, that was a good thing.
Good, well, thank you, uh, I don't know if there's any comments, you're not obligated, but, uh.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to.
You know the drill.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's not for people here, it's for all the people watching at home.
That's true, that's true. Uh, I wanna thank you, it's great, it's great to see you, thank you for all your efforts with this. And, uh, Representative Lewis and I are here basically to show our support for this project, support for the town, that we will continue to do whatever we can, we're in this all together, uh, and that's what we need to convey. Uh, I know I moved to Ashland in the eighties, and I think within a couple of years of living here, we started talking about the need for a new public safety building, so this is a long time coming, and I agree uh, with, with the boards and, and the town manager's assessment and the committee's assessment that we can't put this off. We will continue to advocate, but as the town manager noted, a bond bill is not guaranteed and we can't advocate until it's basically shovel-ready. So once the, the, the project is shovel-ready, uh, together with the town, uh, we, we can try to advocate, but it's up to the governor and his administration whether or not funding is released, so, and that, you know, I've had projects take twelve years to, to, um, get some funding released or close to that, and sometimes it's been partial. So it, it, you, you don't know, you don't know what the administration will think. We, we can think it's a great project, so we'll have to see, but we will work with you and advocate in whatever way we can to assist, uh, the committee, to assist the town, uh, to, to try to, to help this project move forward.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, by all means.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, cause Joe kind of alluded to it.
Mike.
Um, Mike.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I, in a text or an email to the town manager, I said, I prefer to go in, often, you know, this optimistically, because it's a lot, you, you're a lot more aggressive, um, on trying to get the money. When I started at Framingham State in nineteen ninety-six, at that time, they had a bandbox for a gym with one toilet. And I got them a story in the Boston Globe showing three basketball players, female basketball players, looking at it. And we got, it took a lot more work after that, but we got the money released, uh, from the state to build our new athletic center there. And that was a state agency, and it took a lot of work. But I just want to say, I'm really optimistic on this, since, um, I've talked to, uh, Michael about it, I've given a lot of thought to it. And, um, you know, the approach to do it, it's not easy, it's gonna be a lot of work. I told him I'd be willing even to, you know, help pawn show it as best I can. But, um, and I've been thinking of some little angles, you know, do I know a lot of people in government, and it's very workable. And, um, you know, I think we can do it, um, you know, projects are added to, um, existing spending plans. And, um, you know, there's no reason why ours can't be. And, um, so I think we're gonna, it's gonna be a good year, and as Senator Spilka mentioned about the administration too, I've almost been ready to say, I'm ready to call my good friend Hannah Kane and tell her to have her best friend, Chris, bring her into Ashland to help us out. So the administration will see how serious we are about this.
Thank, thank you, Peter.
Peter, are you still those basketball players that you can bring and we can have them in the?
Well, you know, it's interesting you mention it, cause I'm a men's basketball coach, Bill Arena, uh, coached, uh, Charlie Baker, who won, uh, Baker's.
Is that right?
Baker told me that.
Very good, well, thank you, Peter, for, and, uh, you know, thank you, thank you for your participation in this as well, so. So that's our public safety building update at this point, and, uh, I think we'll move on. Right, so thank you, chiefs.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
I mean, you don't have to stay, you don't want to.
There's a gentleman that may have a question.
Come to the mic, uh, please, Chuck.
Thanks, uh, in the absence of our co-chairs, the sustainability committee, Margie and I are here. Um, you know, we're gonna propose a net zero, um, plan for, um, Ashland at the town meeting. And I wanna create a little bit of trouble to say that we need to be thinking about our building projects in that context too.
We, we have talked about that, Chuck, uh, we don't know, we need to analyze the cost.
I, God, I understand that, all I would, all, we just, we had our meeting, um, the other day and we just thought it was important to say for both this and for the school and so forth and so forth. And in the long run, of course, this saves us money, I mean, it, it's an economically efficient thing.
Well, we will, we will come to you to, certainly to be speaking on that behalf then, as we move forward.
Is it possible for a member of the committee to join in your meetings?
They're, they're open meetings, I mean, we're not a building committee, so.
The building committee I'm referring to?
Yeah, but we're not, it's, it's not, uh, technically a building committee, we're not necessarily making decisions about at that level yet. So, but they're, they're open meetings, Margie, you can come, the thirty-first, six o'clock downstairs, and you can, you know, absolutely, you can, you can speak to it.
Yep, I just, I think we all agreed as, as part of the public safety building committee that once we got to a place where we knew kind of what the programming would be, that we would invite a member of the sustainability committee to come and talk, talk to us about that, because it is something that we've talked about for the public safety building, and I can tell you, it's really been a part of the conversation in regards to the Mendez School.
Yeah, we're concerned about all three of them, any new buildings really, but we have three big ones coming up. And we're happy to work with you to find ways that we can make it work without making the budget unreasonable.
And, and we do think that in the long run, it helps our budget.
Yeah.
Well, for building, if we're building a building that's gonna last forty years, we want it to be, we want it to be as, as.
Sustainable and energy efficient and green as possible.
Yep, good. Okay, moving on. Downtown improvements.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Alright, thank you, sorry, just wanted to get my paperwork here. Um, so those of you that have been driving through downtown, um, okay, um, sorry about that. Um, so I just wanted to give you an update on the water main project that's starting downtown, now that started this week. Um, so they've started the temporary above-ground water mains, I think, that's what you see, the pipes are up and, uh, and connected. They're installing water main bypasses on Fountain Street, Front Street, Concord Street, Main Street, Water Street, and then a small section on Pleasant Street. They're planning, um, their timeframe is it's gonna take two weeks to install the temporary pipe and flush it and disinfect it and then start connecting the buildings to the temporary lines. Now, um, there will probably, probably be traffic impacts, but, um, most of the work's gonna be on the side of the road, so both lanes will be open. Um, you should always give yourself some extra time though, if you, uh, you know, if you're trying to, to get somewhere. And, and then also, if you know, uh, we're doing Main Street, but then we're also doing Summer Street, so that's tentatively scheduled uh, to start on the first week of August. That's, uh, just, yeah, I don't think I have any, any other updates with regards to that.
Um, I know we had talked about a communications plan as far as like, you know, DPW, do you guys wanna just kinda touch on what that's going to look like, if there's updates to, is DPW putting out like a notification? Or how, how are folks gonna be aware of when things are gonna start? Or continue?
Do you know where the top is?
I do.
So we'll be receiving weekly updates from our engineer, um, ideally by Friday, late afternoon, that projects what the next week. We'll be posting notifications if, um, any tra- if there's any gonna be any traffic impacts or any large changes in sort of what would the public would be seeing. Some of the smaller things where they're projecting out, we're gonna do, you know, this, this, this pipe, you know, this week, we're not gonna put that on. Um, but it will be done on the DPW, um, website, um, it'll be pushed, uh, they have a project page and then also I believe they'll be pushing it as a newsflash, and if you sign up to be, uh, under notify me and, and you sign up for DPW notifications, anytime that anything's posted under that newsflash in DPW, you'll receive, uh, notification, either I believe, uh, text or email, depending. notification either, I believe, uh, text or email, depending on what you decide. It's your preference. And so we'll be doing that um throughout both projects.
And if people are not on notify me, how can they get on notify me?
So if you go to our our website, um.
The town website?
The town website, there's a little button that says notify me.
It's a big button.
It's a big button, it is.
Down near the bottom or, okay.
So when there's the four buttons, one says development projects, one says notify me. You can click that and we'll walk it through. I believe there is instructions, but I will double check, on the DPW page that sort of walks you through how to exactly sign up for these notifications. Um, if it isn't there, we can put something up. That way it's easier.
Great.
That's very good.
Could it, could we put something up on the 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 news on our town website that talks about like what the timeline is? Cause I don't think there's anything like on the news flash on the main site.
I thought they're.
Could be wrong.
Check right now while we're sitting here.
Yes.
Yep, that's what he's doing.
I might be, I might be wrong. I could be wrong.
No, you're right.
Okay.
You're talking about on the main homepage, right?
On the main homepage, yeah. Just just to give people an update, like if they go onto that.
Like an alert.
An alert, yeah.
I mean, then obviously everything will also be pushed in social media as well.
Right, yeah. So on the Ashland Bulletin Board and other people will then share that.
All right. Okay, so next uh is Townwide Strategic Plan.
Um, really have no updates on that, sorry.
That's all right. Uh, and the, our last uh project priority update is the Warren District.
Okay, so I will start with the Warren Milking Barn, um, and jump in if I get something wrong here. Uh, but we just received proposals from.
Can you just clarify what the Warren Milking Barn is so that?
The Warren Milking Barn is the one on Chestnut Street that has the big X's on it right now.
In the silo.
Yeah, next to the big silo. Um, so we did get a price proposal for the architectural and engineering services. It came in at ninety thousand, which was significantly higher than what we had expected. So we're looking through that and trying to get that down. There's a couple of things that I think that are being proposed that the architect does that I think David um should be doing. And so we can look at that. And then also, one of the things that we were looking at doing is phasing um this milking barn. So just building the shell and then, you know, that gives us an opportunity to figure out what to do with the interior, have a few more conversations with Framingham State. And uh, we have, uh, we're, we're trying to to work that out with the architect. Of course, the architect wants to do the whole thing.
Right.
So. You know, I will say that based on what the, you know, engineering estimate is and what some of the construction estimates for like a full build-out, not just the shell, it's coming in around eight hundred thousand to a million. So, yeah, and that's without steel, so it was.
That's amazing because we were, not that many years ago, we were looking at the relocation of a barn. And we were looking at estimates based on the accessories, the outfitting, uh, that would be basically fully outfitted for that kind of money, meaning a fully utilized, in essence, a party barn, ready to rent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the Valentine barn?
Yes.
Because that was, what I remember is that was just dismantling it piece by piece, labeling it, moving it to a new location and reassembling it. It was like seven hundred thousand.
I know, but they're like a foundation. I mean, there was more that went with it, for sure.
There was a lot more.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
How many years later though?
Right, no, no.
At least six or seven years.
Yeah, at least six, yeah. All right, so that's the Milking Barn. Uh, the Hall House, any update there?
Yeah, the Hall House, I think later the board is going to vote on um on voting on the disposition and sale of four thirty-three Chestnut contingent upon a historical deed restriction. So Jen can't put out the RFP for that until um, until that vote is taken.
Okay.
Um, I think a a copy of the deed restriction has been provided to you.
Okay, so why don't we, if you wanna describe that a little bit, why don't we, we address that right now?
Sure.
Since we're on the Warren District.
So as part of the Warren District plan that was approved by the board in January, the Hall House, the Jaeger Hall House, which the town acquired at the same time that it acquired the Milking Barn, was going to be um sold to a private entity who could then restore it to the historical standards. Um, hopefully put that on the this, uh, the National Register. We found out that we have to work with Framingham State to do that. And then uh, turn it back into a private residence and put it back on the tax rolls. Um, that in turn would save us money that we could then put towards the barn. Um, remember, we're dealing with a pretty limited budget in terms of the Warren District. Um, while also maintaining, um, the overall, you know, the message that I got in October and I think the rest of the board got, um, was that people wanted to save the historic buildings. And so that would allow us to do that, again, return it to the tax rolls. Um, and again, achieve the outcome that we wanted to have that that home restored. Um, I do have an idea, probably, you know, not necessarily germane right now, but I'm gonna throw it out there. I would like to see if when it does get back to the tax rolls, if we could take the taxes um that we receive from that property and devote it towards the Warren District. So have its, you know, put it in perpetual care or something like that. So that'll take some town meeting actions as well, but.
Okay, so leading up to that uh discussion then, uh, let's move on to a vote on the disposition and sale of four thirty-three Chestnut Street contingent upon a historical deed restriction agreement. So any discussion on that agenda?
I just wanna say, I know, you know, we've been talking about it since January. I think we, all of us sitting here understand the value of that home. And we're just trying to find a way to restore it to its historical value, but let it still be available. And I believe, you know, this conversation that, you know, open once a year or twice a year to the public to still celebrate what happened there with Henry Warren. We've, we're seeing it hap- have happened in Framingham. So I think that's a good example of why, of why we decided to go this route rather than just trying to maintain it ourselves and try to fund it. So I think it's important for people to remember that.
Yeah, good. Any further discussion on that? Uh, we have discussed this several times.
I know, I just, sometimes none of them watches.
And I just, I think it's important for people to understand, you know, what we're doing and why, why we're doing it.
Right.
And uh, I think you you gave a good description of uh.
Okay.
Given all the bases. So, so if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve and sign the purchase and sale agreement. Um, we vote on the disposition and sale of four thirty-three Chestnut Street contingent upon historical deed restriction agreements with the purchaser.
Second. So a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, uh, all those in favor? Hold on.
Just one quick question. How long are we looking at for the historical deed restriction to be worked on? What what timeframe is that?
So it's a thirty-year renewable restriction. So a new, so I talked to Cliff Wilson who had indicated that the Historical Society would be willing to hold the deed restriction.
Oh, okay, good.
So, and and so they would be the ones who, you know, if there were any proposed changes to the outside or anything like that, they would have to go through them. Um, there was a question I think brought up about um the enforcement of the deed restriction. And uh, quite simply, it it's not going to have a permit, get a permit to do anything um unless it has gone through the holder of the deed restriction and they agree with those changes.
And that'll be the Historical Society.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and all those opposed, so that carries four zero one. Very good, thank you. And that concludes the Select Board Manager Priority Project Update and part of Old New Business. Uh, next on the agenda is the signed purchase and sale agreement for land known as Zero Tri Streets. Want to uh describe that?
For those of that are not aware, uh, Zero Tri Street is a land about nine acres, actually nine and a half acres, I should say. That's off of Tri Street and also abuts Adams Road as well. So for those that don't know the neighborhood, that's um off of one twenty-six, off of Pond Street. Um, two or three years ago, it was purchased. There was a proposed uh development um that was going to be put there. I believe it was five single-family homes. And then it's gone through the concert, it was going through the Conservation Commission process. It was also going through the Planning Board process as well. It, the Conservation Commission had um basically issued a determination that the applicant did not agree with. Um, so it's been in litigation for a while. Um, and one of the things that has been brought up as a way to protect and preserve this property would be for the town to purchase it. Um, and so on the board's direction, I have uh discussed that with the, with the applicant, the owner. His name's Alan Marx, part of Tri Street Partners. Uh, he's agreed to um a purchase and sale agreement, um, which I'm asking you to sign tonight. And I believe this contains everything that we talked about. So um, first of all, I'll just run through some of the highlights if that's okay. We don't have to go through the whole P and S. So first of all, the purchase price is going to be six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, minimal deposit. One thing that is, uh, I think important to note is that we still have outstanding litigation um with regards to the Conservation Commission and Tri Street Partners. That litigation is going to still continue until the town meeting vote where it is decided whether or not the town will purchase this property. After that, um, we have agreed to drop that, drop that appeal, um, regardless of how the town meeting vote goes. This was originally, we had talked about dropping the appeal right away. The thought was, okay, if we go ahead and do that, cause we have a limited window, and let's just say in September, the uh Mr. Marx decides he doesn't wanna go through this deal again, and he backs out. He's got minimal, minimal penalties associated with this. And we've lost our opportunity to continue to litigate it. The closing date will be thirty days following an affirmative vote um of the twenty nineteen fall town meeting, which we haven't set a date yet, but we're anticipating in late fall. Couple of things on page five, um, we talk about the town meeting vote. We also talk about a debt exclusion vote uh to provide the funding for the purchase of the property on or before November nineteenth of twenty nineteen. Uh, this is something that the contingency that the board wanted.
So we would have to do a special election?
We would have to do a special election if we go down that road. And I really think those are all the highlights.
Okay. All right, now, do we have to, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, all of our discussions uh prior to tonight were done in executive session. So we are, um,
Gonna need to.
We are gonna need to approve the the purchase.
You have to authorize a member of the board to sign the purchase and sale.
Okay.
All right, all right. So we are gonna wait for Joe to get back and uh, because I think we'll authorize Joe as clerk to to sign that.
And then we also should then release any of the, any executive session minutes related to it or not yet or?
Well, I mean, normally I think we we do that as a rule anyway, but subject to town council review and then.
Review, I, because the litigator in some of these, some of the exec sessions were related to litigation.
So we need to wait until that's, okay.
All right, so let's uh, I guess, talk among us ourselves here for a minute. Well, well, Joe is busy, so. Do we need to make a motion to go beyond eight thirty tonight? We're moving along pretty well.
Oh, oh.
Did I just?
Yeah, you did. Um.
No, I didn't.
Can we maybe move to Town Forest Bridge project while we're waiting for Joe?
He's on his way.
Oh, okay.
No rush. We're we're waiting on you. So Joe, we just uh completed the discussion on the uh, the Tri Street purchase. And uh, we are going to entertain a motion to uh, after any, any further discussion from the board, we're gonna authorize you as clerk to sign the uh, the documentation.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, so any, any discussion based on, on Michael's uh update?
No.
Good, no? So I will entertain a motion then to move forward.
Okay, I move that we approve the signing of the purchase and sale agreement as presented with Joe signing as clerk of the board. My second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that, uh, all those opposed, and that carries four zero one.
It works against Margie, so. This is good. I think you, we're kind of moving through this very procedurally, but I think this is a great opportunity to and we are going to look at also, I think it's important to say, uh, finding ways to preserve additional acreage as part of this transaction.
Next question is, is are, has there been efforts in discussion?
Not since we have last, last talked, I'm gonna kinda get this finalized.
That would be under a deed restriction or?
We would, we would do that through a deed restriction, correct.
Okay, very good. All right, so our last item under Old New Business is discuss status of the Development Liaison Group. And uh, at this point, I'm not uh going to entertain that we get into a discussion about how it should be, the composition of it at this point in time. I prefer to have a a full board here before we we get into that uh discussion. But I do need to acknowledge uh, um, some procedural errors on our part. So the Development Liaison Group was a concept that was brought forth uh several times and adopted recently and as a kind of an information sharing process between um Select Board, Planning Board, other town boards or committees that, as appropriate, and a developer or a uh, some entity that wanted to do a project. And it was conceived really as a, just an information sharing type of environment, not as a uh, a negotiating process, not as a, a voting process, not as a regulatory process. Just again, having people that are going to adjudicate or reflect on being in the same room at one point to, to have the same information. So, good concept, uh, poor execution on our part. Uh, what we did as a board is we appointed two of us, in essence, a subcommittee. And we proceeded to have two meetings with a uh, with a proposed project. Uh, there were no negotiations that, that occurred. Strictly discussions, introductions, uh, conceptual ideas. Um, so despite some uh, um thoughts out in the community that there were negotiations going on, that that was, that was not the case. But be that as it may, we actually were a subcommittee, should have been posted, should have complied with open meeting law, and we did not do that. So it's incumbent upon us to self-report that we violated open meeting law. As I say, we're self-correcting it today. Uh, we will determine uh at our next meeting our future process going forward, whether we continue with a subcommittee or we go a, a, in a different, different path. But uh, you know, I just wanna reiterate that this was uh, again, not, uh, there was no malice intended, uh, there was no negotiations and uh, you know, again, just bad execution, so.
Similar to like a tech review, where you get everybody together in the room and just discuss things.
Yeah, yeah, and it's really kind of, you know, the thought about, you know, one of the thoughts we will discuss at our next meeting is the potential of kind of bundling it with tech review. And uh, because I think there's elements in tech review that might be important for, for folks to to know and understand, so.
Interesting that you say that, and maybe this is not the, the, the right place and time to discuss it, but I did have a conversation with a um, a developer uh two weeks before um, we met ta- tonight. And his concern was that, um, he knows that he has a very large building that, that's people rent from, space from. And um, he sees that sometimes the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing when it comes to certain departments in, 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 in the town. And it, and it creates some sort of frustration with the, the people that are trying to come in to do certain things. One group may say one thing and then another group says, well, no, you have to do it this way, after they were told to do it a, a, another way. So I think the idea of this, this group is beneficial, because if you're gonna be working with certain developers or businesses that are already de- uh, in town, could come to you folks to sit down and say, look at, what's, what's going on here? We're told one thing by one group and then we go do it and then the group that we have to go see says, oh, no, you have to go do it another way. So there's, there's, the syntax isn't, they're, they're not, they're not working together.
I, I.
And that's a, a big problem that they, that they see, because it, one, it's, it's costing the potential new business people in town money.
Yep.
And especially if you're on a very tight budget, it, it affects them. And especially if you're on a very tight budget, it affects them down the road, so.
I, I can, I think I know what you're referring to, but it's, I think it's important, so. But let's table this till we have a full board and we'll get into it at our next meeting.
I just wanted to say, this was the first, this, this particular project that you were referring to where there were two meetings, that was the first two meetings of this group in general.
Correct, that is correct, yes.
So this is a brand-new entity that, you know, has sort of started. And it's all on the front end of any other real process, like with the planning board and stuff like that.
Exactly, that's a good point, because it.
So it's, it's, it's kind of in addition rather than in place of.
Instead of, yeah.
Yeah, again, it's not, it's not advisory, it's not regulatory, no decision-making, no voting. And just kind of, you know, the concept was information sharing, so we'll leave it at that.
I mean, one thing I would like to talk to whoever you spoke with about that, because I think, I think it's important, sometimes boards don't agree on, on what to do, and I mean, it's.
I think codes get interpreted differently by different entities.
Well, that, that, and that happens too.
And then maybe that, those things are resolved when people are in the same room and, you know, right?
Right, that's basically what this gentleman was saying, get everybody in the same room and work together.
Alright, moving on, Town Manager Report, including but not limited to.
So I'm gonna start with the not limited to. So first, I want to give you an update on the MSBA process with the new MINDAS school, renovated MINDAS school, however we're gonna term it.
Whatever we decide to do there, which hasn't been decided.
Whatever we decide, which hasn't been decided. So we've been going through the process of selecting a designer to do the feasibility study. And this is the first time I've been through the MSBA process, and it's very prescribed, it's very regimented. And I'm usually kind of resistant to that, but this has been just an unbelievable process. And so I've been on the committee along with the MINDAS School Building Committee, and Yolanda is the vice chair of that, Paul Kendall is the chair, and we've just got a great group of people. I've been a part of, I guess you could say, a subcommittee design review panel with Superintendent Adams and Mr. Kendall to select this designer. And so a couple, we received seven proposals, we held a meeting and got feedback from the rest of the committee. We took that to the MSBA where we met with the full MSBA panel. We then narrowed that down to three designers that we brought in for an interview, which we, we had that interview yesterday and selected a designer. That firm is Flansburgh Architects, they have a great, they have a great track record of building projects under budget, within budget. One of the MSBA board members who's an architect says, it's very easy to design an expensive, good building. It's really hard to design a, a good building that is cost-effective, and they have a great track record. But one of, the thing I want to, I want to bring up mainly is the chair of the MSBA, Bernie, took five minutes in front, in, at the first part of this very prescribed process to talk about, he has never seen a district that's been more prepared, more engaged than the Ashland School District. And he just kept going on and on about that. And I really do think that's a testament to Mr. Kendall and Yolanda, the way you have formulated this process and moved it forward. Yeah, he just couldn't say enough good things about it, so it was really, really nice to hear.
And Mr. Adams, I mean, he has made sure that we've stayed on top of any of our deadlines and getting things in beforehand. And, and then the committee, the rest of the committee, they're very engaged, they're very knowledgeable. A number of them have been in the process on others, on the other side of the table. So I think we have a real good group there. So now, we're in the process of setting up the meeting with the design and the, and the committee, and then we'll be moving forward from there.
Great, good, yeah, yeah, and I know, you know, knowing Paul Kendall and the way he approaches things, I mean, without question, he is so meticulous and analytical, but, you know, thank you to, certainly to Paul, to Yolanda. And, and I know Mr. Adams is, you know, he is, he is so immersed in this as well.
Yes.
And I think it's, it's also a testimony to, you know, the efforts that we've made as a community in terms of the relationship between the school department, the school administration, the committee, and, and general government, the Select Board, and that continues. And, you know, I think it's, we've worked hard to establish that, and, you know, we'll work hard to continue that. And so, you know, kudos to, to that process, show us the money, I guess.
Well, again, this is a very prescribed process. And I, just to hit the rewind tape, I do think it's important when we're talking about the fact that we need a new public safety building, we're not saying because we need a new public safety building, we don't need a new school, and vice versa, it's actually just the opposite.
A good point, and I think, you know, I, I think it's, it's, it's good at this point to state, and we talked about this at our retreat, that, you know, the Select Board is in concert in terms of support for, for the, for new school, just as much as we're in support of a public safety building. I think you mentioned earlier about the fact that we've bundled projects together in our history all at one time. And, you know, we're, we're, obviously, we're gonna be doing the same thing here, because we're gonna be moving forward with two of these.
The thing to remember, though, is the, the school, the MINDAS School Building Feasibility Group is just that, it's the feasibility. And there is a prescribed amount of time that we have to take to do the feasibility. It's gonna be at least two years before the project is done and we can even go to the MSBA to say, okay, we're now ready to build our school.
Right.
So I think if we can get the public safety building started and figure that funding out, knowing that we're gonna have to do a school, but know that it's still a number of years down the road, they're not gonna both hit it once. So I think, I think, well, I think it's important to let the public know that, that, that it's just the feasibility that's happening right now for MINDAS. We're not putting a shovel in the ground within a year, it's at least two to two and a half years before we can, right, we have to.
Yeah, yeah, good. Alright, so that was the including but not limited to part, so.
Oh, no, no, I've still got a couple more things.
Okay.
Sorry, so just to give you an update on the status of the home rule petition that we filed for the meals tax, Economic Development Fund. So I did hear from Representative Lewis's staff that they were gonna try to have a committee meeting yesterday. First goes to the Joint Committee on Municipalities, and provided some, we provided some testimony, written testimony in advance of that. I've not heard the outcome of that yet, but I expect it to be positive, so.
Good.
Let's, we've had, it was brought up that Ashland has had a lot of home rule petitions for some of these creative, you know, creative things.
Just to, just, just to clarify, this is going to fund the business incentive program and other things that we're gonna be doing in town, correct, or no?
So this was the meals tax, so this is basically carving out the meals tax to go support economic development activities only.
Not earmarked, okay.
Yeah, not just, not just general fund, but.
New stuff.
Into economic development only.
Are we still, are we taking, I'm sorry, are we taking monies away from the community center?
Going to zero, no.
Oh, okay.
No, we're still, we're, I think we did an analysis when we did.
I just want to make sure some people, because I know that they.
So just to rest assured, when we passed the meals tax, we had this, I think, discussion when we were going forward with this, that, you know, there was some concern, because we were using the meals tax initially to fund certain programs. We're actually funding those programs well and above the level that was provided through the meals tax, and we'll continue to do that, so.
Thank you.
No fears about that, no fears. Okay, moving on to the ones that are listed. So, Town, the Town Forest Bridge Project. I think we had a few Eagle Scouts in here not too long ago to describe what they were doing at, in the Town Forest and building a few pedestrian bridges. I'm pleased to say that they're completed, and they will be having a recognition and ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday, August third, at ten AM. It's gonna be in the Town Forest, on the White Trail, so if you go up from the Winter Street parking area. And it's gonna give us the opportunity to thank and recognize Garrett Perry, Ben Eisenthur, and Joseph Morrissey for the work that they did building these bridges and constructing these bridges. And we plan to have, of course, the Town Forest Committee there, because they've supervised and helped with this work. But we hope everybody can make it, I think it's a great.
I, I think so too. Susan, I think I'll speak to you directly, maybe some proclamations are in order for, for this event, so we can talk maybe tomorrow.
I know the Chief Alfon will have the, please, the ATV out there as well.
ATV. He's actually gonna put it on the bridge to demonstrate the spring from the bridge.
That's how, that's how I'm gonna get up there, I definitely know.
Well, actually, we'll also be fairly close by to see the work on the Stone House, too.
That's true.
Right, because that's right up close to the parking lot.
And there's a lot, a lot of progress, I think, that's been made.
Nice, good, good.
They're a great committee and they get great volunteers.
Yeah, very active, and, you know, kudos to the entire commi, committee, they really put their money where their mouth is, that's good.
Bob Saint Germain's.
Yeah, good job.
That's doing some good stuff.
Yep.
So that's August third at ten o'clock at the Town Forest.
At the, at the Bridge Site Number One.
On the Winter Street side, yeah.
So, the, the Winter Street side, okay.
Yeah, yeah. If you don't mind, I'll do the status of the MWRA connection first.
Sure.
So, that's also in committee right now, actually the same committee, Joint Committee on Municipalities. I've included in your packet a letter of support from the MWRA that highlights everything. You know, one of the things that they point out that I don't think I've done a good job of in terms of recapping the progress that we've made with this is, you know, it highlights the fact that we've already gone through MIBA review, we've done our inter-basin transfer application through the MWRC. We have the bids in now, the bids have been accepted by Southborough. So construction should be starting pretty soon on the emergency connection, it should be done by the end of the year. And then concurrently, we're going through this bureaucratic, legislative and bureaucratic process, so.
I remember, I think it was last year, I met someone from MWRA about, and, you know, we were talking, she asked me where I was from. I said, from Ashland, it's like, oh, yeah, we're very much in support of this and making sure this happens.
Yeah, yeah, it's been good.
Yeah.
It's amazing, this was like the big project, and now, like just a few years ago, and now it's kind of like, huh, it's kind of like an afterthought in a way. So finally, we can recap Monday night's Valentine Forum. Want to say I thought David Foster did a, did a great job of putting together some photos and documenting the work that he had been doing. And then also putting together some illustrations of what could happen, what other places have done. I thought it was a good, I thought it was a good discussion, good feedback.
Yep, some great ideas, yeah.
I, I think one of the things that emerged is, you know, do we have a committee or a task force as part of this? I think part of the, you know, part of the, the equation in, in trying to figure this out is how can you make sure that a committee's work stays productive moving forward? When you have deadlines, like you do have with the MSBA process, and you have money attached to it, it's pretty easy to make sure you meet those deadlines and get things moving forward. It's a little bit different in some of these situations.
A little bit more open-ended. I was actually enthused and impressed with the, first of all, the number of people that were there, but also the, the composition of the audience, and there were a lot of folks that I had never seen before at meetings, so I was pleased to see. Tonight, we have an audience of one at our Select Board meeting, and, but that one was at the, was at the forum as well.
Was at the forum?
And I think, I think I recall you raising your hand, if I'm not mistaken.
But I think there are people watching from home, because even with the live feed that we did, there were people watching and commenting.
Yeah.
So I think more than we realize, people don't want to sit here.
Good point, yeah, yeah, good point, but it was good, it was, it was, I thought, very pleasing to see, again, a group of people normally not, not, that don't come to meetings, and also willing to participate. So, you know, how you structure this with, with, you know, Dave Foster is, is the lead person on this, this process. And, you know, obviously, it's your role to manage that, manage Dave, and, and, you know, get, get him going in the, in, in the right directions, so.
Yeah.
Though, I, you know, it's interesting, I'm on another committee, and I've been appointed a certain position, and they have these guidelines, and they have deadlines for when we have to meet certain things. And certainly, we're seeing in the MSBA process, there are guidelines and there are deadlines that have to be met. I'm almost thinking, it's something we should look at as we're doing some of these projects, right? Rather than just waiting and saying, okay, we're gonna, let's look at the Valentine Project and say, okay, you know, once the committee is formed and they're looking at it, okay, a guideline and a timeframe of when we want to do this. And, okay, when do your proposals have to be in, or when do you have to? And I know sometimes it's hard to do that, or it's hard to keep on the timeline, certainly, we've seen that with some of our projects in town, when we put out the RFPs and they come back different than what we had expected, and we have to adjust our timelines. But I think if we can put something in place for this committee and either other, even other committees moving forward, that gives them a guideline, or lets, or says to them, we want you to create a timeframe and a guideline for how you want to move this project forward. And part of that is public input and other things that might be involved, I think would be very beneficial.
Well, I think we did have a pretty comprehensive list of areas of responsibility for this position, as I recall. But we didn't have, you know, timelines.
Right, no, 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 I think, no, I think for the position we're seeing, but I mean for the committee, right? We're now looking at how, you know, because as, as it was noted, you know, we've owned the property for a year, some things have gotten done. And now we are talking about what we want to do with it moving forward. It's been sitting there, I mean, not, it's not just been sitting there, we had to shore it up to make sure it was safe against the weather, and, and that was all good. But I think now that we've reached out and there are people willing to step up and be part of the discussion and volunteer, that can be one of the guidelines, say, okay, get your committee together and move this forward.
The only thing, I would, I would agree, I, I think that's a good idea. I think maybe, maybe we structure it around town meeting timeframe, so that people, you know, there's, there's deadlines that people have to have a report and a, and a presentation in time for town meeting, and that way, the public can see what the progress is.
Yeah, great idea.
I think, you know, just overall my, you know, I've got, I thought a lot of the ideas were great. I thought some more feasible than others. And I think that's where I get a little concerned, just, you know, you, these are volunteers, they're giving of their time, and you would hate to see a committee spend a lot of time and energy go through and come up with something that then does not, you know, spend months, maybe even a year, on a plan that is not necessarily viable, and it wouldn't necessarily work. So I'm trying to think, how can we?
I think we need to take the temperature of the marketplace, in, in the sense of, you know, is, is the marketplace available to achieve some of these ideas?
I agree a hundred percent.
And then, you know, you, you can, then the conceptual things will start to fall into place. So if there is, so there were several examples of, you know, kind of farm-to-table concepts there, right? Or restaurants, or whatever, or entertainment venues. And are there entities out there that are willing to invest in that location? So I guess we need to create a marketing concept first, in the sense of, you know, is there, is there the marketplace out there? Here's what we have, are you able to do this or willing to do this here? And it happens elsewhere, so why can't it help happen here? So, you know, again, what's the, what's the horse, what's the cart?
I had asked Beth Reynolds, I said, is there, has there been any interest in the property? Has there been anyone that's come to you, and she's like, we haven't figured out what it's gonna be. So until we have that sort of concept, it's harder to.
Well, we have actually, you know, in essence, it's a, it's almost a, a blank palette, in a sense, a blank canvas. You know, there's, there's two buildings there, obviously in need of work, but you can see, you know, you can see conceptually that, the potential, because you can see what's been done in other places. So, you know, is it resonate for, you know, for a business owner, for, you know, an investor to come in and do something there? You know, I mean, I think there's a lot of infrastructure, you're on a main road. I mean, I think you're, you're in Metro West Massachusetts, you know, you've got a built-in population.
The, the other thing that I think is something for the committee, you know, or for all of us to consider is, it can be, it can go through phases, right? I mean, I think about Vinegar Hill, I think that's a great concept. That's not something we can do in a year or two. But we could possibly do something like they do at the Holliston Historical Society, right? If we can make the barn into something that can be used, and someone knows somebody on that committee, let's talk to them. And let's see what, you know, let's see if they can give us some ideas on. on how to make that first step, in regards to some of the other ideas, an art gallery, a s- a space for people to work. These are all things that can be layered on top of each other, as we, as Steve said, find that public-private partnership for someone who is willing to maybe just help us get to that Vinegar Hill. So I think, I think there's layers that we can do to create certain things to then get to that potential end result that we think is gonna be the best thing.
I, I, I agree with, with, with everything that all of you have said, and, and if you look at some of the neighboring towns that have already done things. We don't need to reinvent the wheel.
No, not at all.
What we should be doing is picking their brain and asking them, how did you get to this, how did you get to that? Look at Midway, that, that, that venue up there is absolutely beautiful, I mean, we've gone to meetings and things of that nature. I mean, they utilize that as a caretaker lives there.
Right.
You know, so, maybe that's an idea where you have, that the front, make it, make a small apartment up there, so the person that's gonna take care of that property lives on site.
Right.
That's a good point, Joe.
You know, so, and you, we need to look at all these different things.
I think, you know, right now, I think we need to, we need to allow David to, to do this front-end work and analyze and bring back to the community, you know, a concept like, like the Thayer Homestead, which is owned by the town.
It's owned by the town.
Right, and we're not sure if it's managed by a management company or the town manages it. Versus a concept like a Vinegar Hill or a Giblet Farm, where it's, it's a, it's definitely a private entity that comes in and does this. So, he needs to provide that, I think that's kind of the front-end work that he needs to do, is, is to get that information.
A combination of both and utilize it that way.
Yes, and come back and say, okay, here's, here's, here's how these things get done.
So, are we not doing the committee, are we doing the committee, what are we?
Well, I.
I mean, I, I mean, we had a number of people raise their hands.
Yeah, and you don't wanna, I'll have to say, I, you know, a lot of new people raised their hands too.
Yeah.
I think probably the best way to structure it so everybody is being efficient with their time, um, is do something called, uh, adaptive, thank you, the procurement officer here, um, you do an RFP for adaptive reuse, and so essentially, it's a call for proposals. We have this property, um, these are some of the ideas that we, you know, that have been, you know, put out there that, you know, the community seems to have, be interested in, but you're certainly not limited to it. And you go out and you make it open to anybody who wants to put together a proposal, who says, you know, eh, we would like to do, you know, maybe make it a restaurant, or a, a historical society, or something to that effect, and then you accept proposals. And you could, it doesn't have to be like a for-profit entity, like the Ashland Historical Society, uh, could put one together. The, um, up in Weston, it's the Josiah Smith Tavern and Barn. So they formed, um, when they were looking at doing something similar, they formed a Friends of the Josiah Smith Tavern and Barn, who put together a proposal and leased space to a few community groups that was subsidized, and then also had a restaurant as well, it's still going through the process. So, and then have a committee, maybe review those proposals and, you know, pick the ones that they wanna explore a little bit more. And some of those proposals might say, look, we need the town to, you know, invest X amount of dollars to, to do that, but, I think that'll give us a little more structure, I think, for a committee and all of us collectively to, um, to get something really good there.
Okay.
I will say, so like Thayer, the Thayer Homestead, I was looking at the timeframe, so they bought that property in two thousand and four and didn't renovate it.
It took them a while to do it.
In like ten years, and I'm like, I don't, I don't.
No, 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 I, and I don't, I don't think the community wants to wait that long to, to, I mean, I think my understanding with the Thayer house is they had the opportunity to buy it without really understanding what they were gonna do with it. And then, similar to us, and then they've created this process and this, you know.
Spent a whole lot less money than we did.
True, true.
Okay, so I think it's, so we're deciding.
Do you like that idea and I can pursue it?
So are we holding off on the committee and then trying to do that, or are we trying to do both simultaneously?
The committee can review it, right?
Yeah, the committee can review it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think you create a review committee, right?
Yeah, you want me to put together a process and a proposal for you to?
Yeah. Next, for next meeting, let's put it on, yeah, that's great.
Yes, for the next meeting.
Sounds like a good idea.
Cause we don't, you know, we wanna, we wanna capture the, the interest from these folks.
And the energy, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, that completes the including but not limited part of our agenda tonight. And we're moving on to board reports, and, uh, I'll start, I think, onto my, my left tonight, so Brandy?
Okay, alright. Thank you, so, um, uh, just a couple of things, I've been, uh, attending a couple of planning board meetings, trying to get my arms around what the planning board process looks like, I wanted to hear from the, um, the developer of the proposed Fusion Site and really understand what he was looking to do. I'm, I feel like I'm still learning the whole planning board process, and it is, um, I like, I like, I, I like attending, I said to Michael, I'm like, I gotta stop attending meetings that aren't my own. But I, I like attending meetings, because I feel like that's the best way to get a lot of information. I was also a part, I, I attended the, um, Yolanda and I were both at the Austin Multimodal, um, I ninety, the Mass DOT project, um, last week on the eighteenth. And that was my, I hadn't really, um, I had heard about a project of straightening out the Mass Pike, but I hadn't really understood what the, 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 um, project really looks like. And they're estimating that, um, the scale of it is, is, um, kind of mind-blowing, it's kind of on the scale of the Big Dig, in my estimation. So they're talking about a one point two billion dollar project, something that's going to take eight to twelve years. It will impact every single person that goes into Boston, whether it's on the Pike or the commuter rail, as a person that commutes into Boston on a daily basis. I see what the, the impact will probably look like. And we had a lot of legislature, legislatures in the room, including, uh, Senator Spilka and Sen- Representative Lewis. And, you know, the impact to the Metro West region is really pretty significant, so they are advocating for, um, as much mediation as possible for Metro West. I, you know, I think this is one of many forums that's gonna be held, hopefully in this area. And every project iteration, hopefully, that comes back to us has a little bit more, um, mitigation in mind for, for Metro West. So I'm looking forward to seeing that and, um, hopefully, not on wood, um, being able to still commute into Boston, so. And then, the other thing I wanted to just, uh, let people know was that, um, Culture Fest, that was originally scheduled for last Saturday at the Corner Spot, was, uh, rescheduled because of the heat. That is going to be October twelfth, so more to come on that, but, um, I think pretty much they're gonna try to get as many of the same vendors and performances scheduled on October twelfth as possible. And then I also just wanna put in a, put in a plug for the Corner Spot on Friday night, um, Wacka TV is sponsoring Jaws, and, um, Joey's Cannoli is coming into the shed. So, my son, I don't know what's more exciting for him, Jaws or the Cannolis, but, um, he's, he's so excited. So, um, we will be at the Corner Spot Friday night with Jaws, so, um, I think that's pretty much it.
Very good.
All right, moving now to my right, Yolanda?
So, uh, as Brandy said, I was also at the meeting for the Interchange Project. It's always interesting, I find, some of the conversations behave before the meeting, rather than what actually happens in the meeting. So it was just interesting to hear some of the backstory and history as to who owns the property that I ninety is on and, and how they might be impacted. I also then spent the day on Saturday at Wellesley College, they had a Wemo Day, so rather than just Wemo lunch that they have at our MMA conference, it was a day. And there was probably about forty elected women who were there, it was great, I met some people from different towns, and it's always nice having that conversation. They talked a lot about, not a lot, but our afternoon session was on social media, and some of the pitfalls and things that we need to be careful of, and I've already reached out to Lisa Ugliarlo, our, our HR person. I think it'll be important that we as a board, as well as the rest of our boards, look at our social media policies, procedures, and how we post and how we make it work between, are you, are you posting as yourself or as a board member, so that was interesting. And then also just an increase in communication. Then coming up tomorrow morning, I will be attending our Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting in Natick, and one of the discussions is the Landline Project. And that is a project that looks at tying together all the chair, the, um, multimodal rail trails that are being built across the state and how we can connect them, and also some of our public transit. And then on Saturday, at the Corner Spot during the day, from ten to two, is Dog Days. You can come and have pictures taken of your dogs, there will be food for both humans and for pets. There is a rain date of Sunday, the twenty-eighth, but I believe Saturday is supposed to be a beautiful day. Just a reminder, all dogs will be required to be on leash while they're there and on any town property, but that should be a lot of fun, so I'm hoping to see people there, and that's all I have.
Okay, very good, I just want to, uh, underscore your, your comments about, uh, the Wemo discussion, the social media, cause I know that's part of our board policies and procedures, Lisa had added a section in that it was, we didn't have one.
Yep.
So, uh, not, no pressure on you in terms of, so.
Well, Lisa and I are actually gonna be next week, so, next Friday, we're gonna start.
No, I didn't mean it in that, in that regard, but.
No, no, oh, yeah, no, that's, yeah.
But as soon as possible.
As soon as possible, next week. I'll have a, I'll have a report on that for, for, on the seventh.
Very good, Mr. Joe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, just a couple of quick things, I, I know you folks have the movies on Friday nights, but Thursday night, Family Movie Night over at Pavilion, uh, free popcorn. We can't advertise the name of the movie, because then we'd have to give out, uh, pay royalties, so, um, we keep the monies, uh, in town instead of giving it to all the folks who don't need the money. So, come to, uh, the Pavilion Thursday night, it starts at, uh, seven o'clock, uh, six o'clock, I'm sorry. So, um, and enjoy, and you get free popcorn. Uh, Snack Shack is open Monday through Friday from eleven to one, that's been going very well, uh, other than some of the, the warm, warm weather. We shut down because it wasn't fair to the folks that are in there when there's nobody utilizing the, the kids' spot itself. And we have our corn sales, they're in the cup again, uh, they're over at Lucky Farms, uh, you'll see the sign that's out there, it says corn. So you go inside the, 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 the front door, then. Yeah, dead giveaway. And, and I have to tell you, I have to, we have to thank Pa, the, uh, the proprietor over at Lucky Farms, uh, he was actually shocked, the number of people that have been going in there, I mean, we're selling.
Just with the corn?
Two or three bags, two or three bags a day, it's, the sales have been going crazy.
This was the time of the year.
The corn is a hot, hot commodity.
And this corn is delicious.
Oh, it is good.
So, uh, it went from gas station corn to, you know, Lucky.
Convenience store corn.
Lucky Farm corn.
Lucky corn.
I, I, I also attended the, uh, the Valentine Forum, which I thought was fantastic, there were some great ideas, and hopefully, we can continue moving forward on that. I, I did wanna talk about, uh, briefly, the, um, Traffic Study Committee met today. And, um, the redesign of the Fruit and Elliot Street intersection, uh, by the, by the school itself. We saw the design today by, uh, the Green, Green Associates there, uh, part of the TIP group, and, um, it, it looks great, we all, we all saw what was happening. We came up with some other suggestions and ideas, Chief Alfano, uh, was right there, came up with some other, you know, suggestions about, you know, the flashing red stop signs, cause it's gonna be a three-way stop, because it's the way, it's a wide intersection.
It is gonna turn into a three-way stop.
It's gonna be a three-way stop.
Wow. Okay.
Not, not raised, uh, crosswalks, but crosswalks that are more, the, more visible to the, for the oncoming traffic, both ways. Uh, the sidewalks will be widened a little bit in, in that area, and that's all part of that program, it was between eighty and ninety thousand dollars in design work that'll be done. But we may be over budgeted with the, uh, with the, uh, request for the, uh, the flashing red, uh, red stop signs. Uh, hopefully, uh, they're like five thousand dollars apiece, so there'll be three of them. And, uh, hopefully, that'll help slow down the traffic coming down around, uh, the school zone and down on the Elliot Street section. And several of the residents were there and saw the designs, uh, they appreciated the comments, hopefully, it'll, it'll work. But it's all part of that TIP program, uh, which is great, the, the Complete Streets, the projects.
Complete Streets. And the grant money that we got.
And the grant money, right, so, um, and then they also talked a, a quick, uh, portion about the one twenty-six project, and that's still on, on mark, which is great to hear. Uh, right now, they don't see anything changing, uh, at all, at, at this stage of the game. But, um, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that, we are doing some more stealth radar, uh, counts on certain sections of town because of, uh, some, some speed enforcement. And as you know, the town of Framingham just recently voted to, uh, lower their speed, uh, speeds, uh, speed to twenty-five miles an hour unless, unless posted. At another degree, and that was, uh, discussed briefly today about that, doing that in town. Not sure if that's something that we may wanna, you know, entertain later down the road, but something we, it was brought up, so maybe we should look at it. The other concern that people had was, uh, the, the South Street, uh, and Spring Street, uh, section of, of, uh, the boat landing area. Even though there've been some major, you know, improvements down there with the, the police presence, it's, it's helped a bit, but there's, there's still some, some, uh, issues going on down there with respect to, uh, people just parking in certain areas and blocking the entire area itself. So, it's, it's difficult to get in and out of it, and God forbid, somebody needed medical attention inside that area, they would have never been able to get in there. So, there was discussion about talking to DCR, um, and closing that entire area off, which is not really fair to the folks that like to fish. And so we're talking about maybe closing that off to where the big rocks are, and leaving the section open for the fishermen that wanna go there to fish and, and, and will walk along the bank area. And have, and talk to DCR with, to install a, a, a boat ramp inside the park, like they have in Hop, in Hopkinton.
Yeah.
Uh, because they're actually losing money. The, the state's losing money by, by people not utilizing the park inside itself. And, uh, yeah, it's gonna be a quick change, you know, uh, that process, but again, these were things that were just discussed, nothing we can do about it, that's a DCR issue, it's on state property. And, uh, you know, talk to Jack and, and Karen at some point down the road about, you know, is that something that's valuable to, to generate business? And generate, to maybe Ashland State Park can become self-sustaining, in the fact that now these people have to pay to get in there to use this. Maybe we can keep a, a lifeguard on, you know, on there, especially, especially over the holiday season, uh, July fourth, there were no lifeguards there, and there was over four hundred people there. That's, that's, that's a disaster waiting to happen.
Yeah, so you kind of, all of you kind of segued in some, to some degree to what I'm, I'm gonna talk about, but, cause I'm gonna talk about dogs.
Yep.
And I'm gonna talk about the, the state park and, but I'm glad you brought up the, uh, the, the, um, um, Traffic Committee, because we did receive a, a stealth report, and it was something, we had a gentleman come before us, complained about the traffic on Myrtle Street, the speed of traffic. And, uh, we were provided with a, with the stealth report that confirmed that there was, now, Myrtle Street is, there's curves, there's bends, there's a hill. Uh, I was amazed at, at how much of the traffic exceeded the speed limit, particularly in the, I mean, the bulk of it was, was in that thirty, thirty-five, right?
Within five or ten, yeah.
But there was quite a few cars that were in the thirty-five to forty, and then there was a, quite a group in the forty and over. So, uh, so that's, I, to go to your point, Joe, about evaluating in the future, you know, the reduction of speed, uh, I mean, we've done this in other areas. Hopefully, it's effective, but I do, and I probably should have mentioned it when, when, when all of the public safety were in the room. I'm noticing it, I, I trust the rest of you are as well, but I'm seeing more activity by the Police Department in terms of stopping, traffic control, stopping vehicles, handing out tickets, and really starting to control, you know, some of these speed issues, and, you know, you and I live off of Prospect Street, you live on Prospect Street.
Oh, yeah, on Prospect Street, yeah.
And we know what the situation is, is there, so, um, so, but it's, you just wanna point out that we're noticing, you know, certainly, uh, a, uh, increase in, in police, uh,
Presence.
Presence in, in our str- on our roads, so, that's a good thing.
You can, just to add, you can now walk safely across Elliot Street when you're walking on Prospect Street in the morning because of the four-way stop.
Yep.
It used to be, you'd, like, you'd stand there and go, okay, when, when do I cross, and now it's a lot easier because of the four-way stop.
And just to, to quick pick, uh, to piggyback on what you just said with respect to the traffic, Ashford Department, Sergeant Berman gave us a, a quick analysis of the four-way stop at Prospect and Elliot Street with respect to accidents. In a full month period, there's been one accident with minor, with minor injuries, prior to that, there were fifteen.
Wow.
With major injuries.
Good.
So it is working.
Good.
It is working.
Very good, so that's a, uh, uh, you're certainly the, the Traffic Committee has done, you know, you, you, I'm not. I'm not sure when we created the committee, it was probably three, four years ago.
Roughly, yeah.
And, uh, you know, you guys have done a tremendous amount of work in a lot of areas in town and, uh, you know, it's.
All of you guys given us the, the latitude to do that.
It's been effective, so, yeah.
Very effective.
Uh, so now I'm gonna segue into DCR and the state park because, you know, I think it's, we have issues and I think we need to get this addressed sooner rather than later. I know, you know, I've talked to Michael, I've talked to Chief Alfano as well about this because, you know, they're, they're charging people to go into the state park, you know, so from my perspective, there's a presumption that, of protection when you pay to go into, particularly a state park, and you go down to the beach and there's a sign that says unguarded, you're at your own risk. Now, you know, there's no sign when you enter.
Right.
There's no signs anywhere until you get to the beach.
Right.
The other problem is none of them are bilingual. Now, I know that there's a lot of Hispanic people from the area that use, utilize the state park. And, you know, I'm assuming that bilingual signage is probably an important thing to have, there's none of that. There's no lifeguard, there's no, who, who is the, the protector of, of, of last cause? Is the town of Ashland, it's our responsibility. So if there's, if there's a, an offense, which there was over the Fourth of July, it's our police, our fire that need to respond. This is not a good situation. I mean, it's, it's the, the, it's the entire park, it's not just the boat landing.
Right.
It's everything about the park. Now, I was involved with getting the park reopened a number of years ago.
Right.
And we were there reopening.
That's right. And, you know, it's, it's not an acceptable situation, it really isn't. And I think if we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, we've talked, we talked tonight about our legislative team assisting us, you know, this is a situation where I think we, we should expect them to assist us. Um, it's, uh, it's not acceptable.
Does DCR, do they, do they monitor the number of people that they allow in?
There's nobody there.
Nobody there.
Well, actually, they monitor it by the, the, you know, now it's, I think, self-service driving in, so you pay. So I think they monitor it that way. But, you know, to, to go to, to Joe's point, I mean, it's, it's unmanaged and they're, they're losing opportunities for, for income.
So there's no one actually sitting there taking money or checking if someone has a pass or?
I think there is sometimes, but there's, there's a machine.
Cause if you have a pass, you don't have to pay, you can just go in and.
But I would think somebody would be counting the, sort of like the number of people that they're letting in because if there's a, if there's an issue where it's overcrowded and then there is a safety issue.
Well, I would say the Fourth of July, it was, uh, you know, it was a classic, I mean, it was a hot day, classic. People were lined up, cars were lined up out, out into one thirty-five around to Olive Street. So the, the, the park, actually the parking lots were closed at some point soon after they opened. And then people started to park wherever they could.
They had, they were parking down, they were parking down the middle school and walking up and walking up.
Community center was full and the middle school were walking.
So Chief Alfano and I talked today, just at Ashland State Park, and we have a lot of calls to Hopkinton State Park as well. But at, just at Ashland State Park this year, we've had seventy, over seventy calls that we've had to respond to.
Yeah, so this is a.
That we've had to respond to at the state park?
That's unacceptable.
So it's, it's, it's health and safety related.
Yeah.
But it's also, on, on occasions, it's criminal related, right? So definitely an unacceptable situation and, you know, I, I, I think we need to really press someone to get some kind of resolution here, um, whatever that might be.
And I know that the Ash.
It might be closing the park, right?
Well, the Ashland Rec Department uses it, so they have their lifeguards there. So, Monday through Fridays, when the, when the, when the park programs are going on. But that doesn't preclude that, you know, the beach area shut off because Ashland Rec is there, it's open to the public. So there is, there is a lifeguard there, but it's the lifeguard for the Ashland Rec Department.
For the rec.
Oh, it's our rec department lifesaver, lifeguard.
So, but who makes that dis, so who makes that distinction?
Our program.
And this is where Steve's coming up, there's a liability issue of making the distinction that you have a lifeguard there, but that's only for our kids. But if there's other things going on and there are people in the water and you see an incident that happening, of course that lifeguard is gonna respond there. Responsibility to do that.
True.
Yep.
And if they don't, but then again, there's, there's that liability factor.
This is why we need to turn the Girl Scout camp into our rec department camp and then it's private and separate.
Good.
Can, can the town petition DCR? I mean, what's the?
Well, it's something that, like, like Steve said, I think it's something that our legislators need to get involved in and have, and maybe bring the rep from DCR in and,
Yeah, I think we need to bring them, we need to bring them to town and, uh, yeah.
And have our, and have our concerns discussed and, and bring them to life.
Yeah, the last time when we reopened the park, we, actually, the, the, the secretary of, uh, uh, that's, I forget which department oversees DCR,
Which department, yes.
But the secretary was there as well as the head of DCR, so, uh, that's.
And the governor was there, Governor Pat, uh, uh, Deval Patrick was there.
Not at the meeting in the community center.
Oh, no, that's, that's correct, correct, no, that was, that was at the.
No, not at the meeting.
So that's, you know, my, my state park rant. The, so, but speaking of, of cars and traffic and so on, I, you know, every time I go by one of our class-two license holders, I always look and to me, to my eye, it always looks like they're in violation.
There's always more.
I don't know that to be the case.
No, it's, I, I have the same.
So do we, you know, I know we were sending out our enforcement agent once a week, is, is that still a regular thing? Okay, good. And I'm not, I'm not accusing anything, it's just, you know, the way I think we're wired, that, that, you know, they're gonna, we're gonna push the envelope, so.
Believe me, they'll try.
Uh, so now I'm onto dogs. So, uh, I encourage people to, to visit the Corner Spot this week, uh, it sounds like it'll be a fun event.
Ten to two.
And, uh, and then the following Saturday, August third, it's our traditional annual Dog Day at the Farmer's Market. And it's one of our biggest days, we get a great turnout, we have a parade. This year we have something different, we're gonna actually have a, a, a roped-off area, we're going to have a, a dog agility demonstrations. And if you've ever seen agility, uh, where dogs go through a course of tunnels and, and jumps and so on, it's, it's pretty cool stuff.
It's amazing.
Yep.
So we're gonna do that this year, so that's, that's Dog Day. So that's that, and then, uh, uh, the Dog Park Committee is who's sponsoring this, this Saturday event at the Corner Spot.
Yeah, this is coming Saturday.
So, you know, I know they're actively working to achieve a dog park here in, in Ashland. Coincidentally, uh, you know, Framingham State University is looking at the potential of putting a dog park into, uh, onto the, their property over at the Warren Center because of the issues that they're finding with, with irresponsible owners.
With dogs.
No, not dogs.
That's true, with irresponsible owners.
With irresponsible owners.
Yeah.
So they're looking, so now we have potential synergy between Ashland and Framingham State University to collaborate together. So we're actually set up a meeting for, uh, August the fifth.
Yep.
And some representatives from Dog Committee, from the Board, uh, Michael, will start the process, the conversation about, you know, how can we?
And see, and see what we can do.
Yeah, so, so that's happening August fifth, um.
Is that here?
That is gonna be at the Warren Center.
Warren Center?
Yeah. And then you forgot to mention Advocacy Day, uh, on August the first.
I did, yes.
Right, so, um, I'm gonna mention it.
Okay, good.
So at the, the Metro West, uh, YMCA is doing their Advocacy Day at the Outdoor Center. Uh, and, uh, it's, I think, you know, like, soon you'll be there, I'll be there.
Yes.
Um, you know, I encourage everybody to go, they're, they're quickly becoming one of our, our partners here in town and, uh, you know, great organization of support, so, uh, that's August first and that's at eight, I think, or eight-thirty.
Thirty, at the Outdoor Center, yeah, at the park, yeah.
Eight-thirty.
Yeah, at the Outdoor Center, Hopkinton, yes. Uh, so that's that and what else? No other rants. Our next meeting is August the seventh, uh, seven PM here at the, uh, Ashland Select Board, um,
And as of right now, we're just having the one meeting in August or we're looking at a second?
Right now, unless we did talk about the potential, if we needed one later on in August, but at this point, I think we're, we're in good shape, so.
Okay. I do have one question, I know we were talking about board appointments, um, that we would be talking about that at the next meeting and appointing folks that are, um, or reappointing those that, um, would like to be reappointed. Is there a way that we could, um, kind of before the meeting, know what, what boards and what positions are still going to, that, that still need to be filled so we can do a little bit of PR? Um, and see if we can, you know, fill some of those positions, so when we do meet, we can, we may have more candidates?
So, um, today, as I was getting responses back, cause I would do back today, there's still a few outstanding. I did go up on the volunteer opportunities and I updated the list that's there. I also put up a newsflash with, um, all of that information as well. So it is there.
Okay.
And it's current as of today.
Okay. Is there, is there descriptions as to what some of these committees and, and?
There is not a description, but there is a description on each of the pages, so I have it in a list form.
Okay.
And then if somebody was interested in a particular committee, they can go to their page and then the information is there.
Okay.
And, and if necessary, if there are still vacancies when we do most of the appointments on the seventh, we can then advertise it again and let people know and then in our first or second meeting in September. Because if they've never sat on that particular board or committee, we encourage them to go to a meeting or two to meet the people before they get appointed.
Before. Yep.
And usually the chair will send a letter to us saying that.
Right, whether they recommend and.
Recommend or not.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Alright, any other commentary this evening?
Nope.
No, so, uh, thank you to WACA TV for their, um, taping and, and, uh, live broadcast and, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And thoughts and prayers to the folks down the Cape after what happened yesterday.
Yes.
Um, we have a lot of friends that are down there and thankfully nobody was, uh, loss of life, there was no loss of life, which is just absolutely incredible.
Yeah, boy ripped off that, that motel.
The roof of that motel, oh my god, and no one was hurt.
That video was just driving me nuts, that's, that's crazy.
That's, that's a mile, a mile from where we stay.
Is that right?
So I'm hopeful that.
They actually said there were two, two tornadoes that touched down, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So I have a motion to adjourn, second, all those in favor?
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye.